Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 7th City Council meeting. Clerk, please call Rob.
Alderman Santi?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman McClatchy?
Here.
Alderman Harding? Alderman Strach?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Here.
Please stand some place. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Sorry, it's the first in-person meeting back in a while, so, all right, open it up for public comment. I do see Josh Cannell and Trevor Clemens is on the list here. We'll go ahead and you speak and public comment of the item that's on the agenda that you're referring to. Is there any other public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening? See none? Moving on to the presentation, Lafarge Aggregates South Mine Plan Update.
Thank you, Mayor Jeff. Good evening, City Council members, staff and members of the public. My name is Randy Willey. I'm an original Meyer Material employee and now employed through Lafarge Aggregates Illinois. They're one in the same, other than it's a brand change. We operate the mine on the west side of the town, and under the 2018 ordinance, we're required every spring to give you an update on processes and the plans that are going out of the mine. So I'll try to be brief, because I think they're all familiar to me, but I can go through great history, so maybe Derek, you can go to the first slide. We can talk a little bit about history. Meyer Material acquired the mine from the Miller family in 1988. Went from a family-owned to a family-owned, and then in 2006, we were sold to Holson, who's one of the largest cement producers in the world, under the brand name of Aggregates Industries during recession. Everybody came out a little bit weaker than they were, so Holson decided to merge with a Swiss company named Lafarge. And Lafarge and Holson, you know, a French and a Swiss company that married in 2015. We've grown now as one unit. It's actually going back to the Holson brand name. But again, they're a world leader. They're in 80 countries. Sustainability is big, so reclamation of land is huge under their watch. While we go to the next slide. Only because I can't see it, so now I gotta peek. Why don't we go back, I guess, just so I can give you the outline of the footprint we're talking about. It may be hard to see on your screen, but in purple, there's a label of everything south of 120. We're talking just east of Bridge Road. Parcel A is an industrial site that includes an asphalt plant and a concrete plant we leased to Ozinga, asphalt plant's run by current. Parcels B, C, D, and E were annexed as part of what is the main mine of South Pitt back in 1988 through about 1992. Those pieces were added on. So most of it's reclaimed. The area that we focused on more recently is in the southeast corner, and I guess, Derek, we can go to the next slide for a little bit, for an inset. This aerial photo was taken back in 2017, but it'll show you when we went for the extension. The area that was probably of concern to everybody, because we were getting closer to homes along Glacier Ridge, which is directly east of that farm field, south of that Wood Creek, and then the south property line was the Burning Tree subdivision, which we had already really mined behind those homes. As part of the extension of the ordinance, we agreed to change our field crushing hours from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Our loading and maintenance hours are still well distant from the homes. We're allowed to open at 5:00 a.m. That's not normal. Probably 5:30 to 6:00 is more normal, unless we're really busy. And we don't run until 8:00 o'clock at night. Most of our scales are closed by 3:30 or 4:00. We can run the wash plant if needed 24 hours a day, and maybe in the future, we could be doing that, because I'll be explaining that the mine is converting over the next 12 to 15 months into essentially a sand and a pgraffle operation, because most of the coarse aggregate is being exhausted and has been for probably 30 years. We have setback zones. If you follow that dark black line, there's a box that depicts the 10-acre woods that was actually heated to the Glacier Ridge Homeowners Association, as well as a 200-foot buffer strip that runs along the homes all the way down to Burning Tree. That was part of the 1988 agreement. As far as the north side, you can't see it in this picture, but we do have 155 acres on the north side of Route 120. There's a tunnel under the road. We started mining there in 2004 and '05. Pulled the reins back, because the housing market went to zero for a long length of time, and we concentrated on the south mine. But we do have an exploration coming up on the north pit later on this year. Why don't we go to the next slide? So this will show you the puzzle that we had projected in 2018, 2019, about how we wanted to finish the south mine. The red boxes are what is considered the dry mining, which is the coarser aggregate on the surface, closest to the original surface. And that's probably where most of the impacts occur when there's neighbors, because we have a field crushing equipment, a lot of conveyors, a lot of mobile equipment, stripping. The cells that are listed in blue indicate where we anticipate to have reserves below water over the next couple of years, and we've been mining a little bit of that line. We've been blending it with, I'll call it, the red boxes. But as you'll see, we're coming to the end of the dry mining sequences in red, and then we'll be concentrating the rest of the term on those boxes in blue. So why don't we go to the next slide, Derek? This gives you the most current aerial that I was able to obtain, and if you focus along the, directly west of Glacier Ridge, you'll see the shadows. That is the last high wall of dry bank material. That is yet to be mined, but it has been stripped. Due to safety concerns, we didn't want to pinch the truck drivers, so we ended up trying to strip the last year and a half's worth of material to get it up and out of the way. So we will start this year in that bank, I'll call it above the water table. So you'll see, probably from the narrative on the next couple of slides, we're probably going to have the biggest impact on those neighbors in the short term, for the next six to eight months, and then maybe a little bit in 2023. But then after that, the mine is going to kind of change gears. So why don't we go to the next slide? So this shows you exactly what we did do in 2021. We mined, dry-mined, a good chunk that was in green, which actually matches those red cells that I talked about a couple of slides ago. Most of that material was very coarse, down 60 feet. We did stockpile some of the sand that was coming along with it, because of our stockpile room, we already had a lot of sand that had built up over time, and we stockpiled that kind of in the middle of the mine. You can see where we wet-mined as well in 2021. There's a little blue box down in the corner where that lake down there got a little bit larger this year, because we were blending materials. When we go to the next slide, we can talk a little bit about where we reclaimed last year. There's probably a little piece of it missing, but in yellow, this wooded area, we actually had filled the north, I'd call it the west wall of the wooded area, probably immediately after I met here last year, and then we walked it around the corner and took the remainder of the stripping dirt last fall and started placing it on the south side of the woods. It is not done. We put enough dirt there to stabilize the high walls for winter, so nothing would slough down. We'll still import dirt or bring it in from other sides of the pit, or use, I'll call it, waste material in our operations to use it in the bank, to build the banks back up. But you can see from here what's left on the dry portion of it. We left ourselves a stable wall going into that corner, and then we'll start mining east and south from there, and that'll be all dry bank materials. So we will have, the primary crusher will still be out in the field this year, pretty much for the entire year. To go to the next slide, that'll show you our 2022 plan, which we anticipate probably getting most, if not all, of the dry bank out this year. I'd say worst case, and I know I said it last year, I thought we'd be done by mid-2022, but it might be early 2023, when we actually can take the crusher out of the field, and then all that would be left would be mining below the water table. So we leave about five feet of material right above the water table, and then that would be used like a backhoe, or two backhoes probably in this case, to start expanding the lake. Now, we don't know for sure exactly how big the lake will get. We've advanced several pourings. We could guess it could be as big as 50 acres if we were lucky and there was that much material. It could be two smaller lakes. It could be one 30-acre lake. We kind of fish around with a backhoe until we start pulling on clay, and then we know the deposit has reached its end. So you'll see the 2022 wet-mining area in yellow is somewhat of an estimate of where we thought we might be, at least by the end of next year. Obviously, when I'm here in a year from now, I can explain exactly where we are and then where we think we're going. But ultimately, starting in 2023 at some point, the dry bank will end, the rest of the mining is going to be farther away from the homes, it's going to be a lot more passive, because it's taking material out of the water that doesn't require crushing, it just goes on a belt. The belt takes it back to the plant. And that's probably how the rest of the mine will go, because the northern deposit, and we re-drilled it last year to make sure, it's a very fine deposit up there. I know that the Miller family had drilled several places north of 120, and it was the only place that actually had material at all that was economically saleable. But it will end up being from 2023 going forward, the equivalent of like a sand and a small stone plant. So we won't have field crushing anymore. So hopefully then any issues with neighbors from that aspect would go away. The last area I'm going to talk about for here, and I'll entertain questions, is parcel A, which is the industrial part. Under the terms of the 2018 ordinance, we were required to restore some areas that had been left where the original plant used to sit, and I don't think it was ever had to be permitted by the state, so it was left kind of moonscape. It wasn't very well vegetated. So you can see it from, in a distance, right up against the tree line, that the south of that tree line, I believe, is a couple of small, it might be part of Glacier Ridge, the east end of Glacier Ridge, and then maybe a couple of other streets that are up there. There's a cul-de-sac that goes up that hill. But if you go to the next slide, you can see a little bit closer. We re-grated and shaped and put fresh topsoil down and seed blankets. That was early last year when we took that picture. It's starting to green up, but it was pretty dry season. We might have to go back and knock some weeds down, just to keep that, those seed blankets keep germinating. But ultimately, that'll be a nice vegetative stand. It's a lot better than it was. But with that, I wanted to keep it short and sweet. I'd rather entertain questions if you have some. If I don't have an answer, I'll write them down.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy by council?
Alderman Glad?
Randy, on the north end of 120, that ends this year as part of our agreement with that?
In, I think, October 20th of 2022, yes.
Now, did I hear right, as far as how long are you going to be expecting the mine then?
Well, I can tell you that, that deposit being a different gradation of material?
Yes.
We won't tell as much, because we won't have any course sales. So if I had to estimate, I'd say around 10 or 11 years on the north side.
Can you be coming in for an extension on that?
Yes, absolutely. Because we, I guess I'd like to finish up the south side by saying, I think we're slightly ahead of the timetable that we were allowed to get the material out of the south side. I think we'll be done before 2026. That's good news for everybody. But we'll definitely start putting capital money to work soon, if approved, to start blending the north side material in, so.
The north side doesn't concern me as much, because definitely that south end, and I'm glad to see that you guys are concentrating on that more than anything else.
Yep.
And I would just hope that you continue as far as to catch up more and more, as far as being ahead of the schedule on that area.
I do, too.
Yeah.
I like getting it all reclaimed, because that does a lot for the neighbors. It does a lot with our relationship. You know, the quicker we can mine below water and create water bodies, then that helps eliminate dust, because these are not getting the little tornadoes that are sweeping through the pits.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Have a good night.
You, too.
All right, move on to the consent agenda, 6A through 6E. Is there any items from the consent agenda that the council would like to pause for separate consideration? Make a firm motion, and a second to approve 6A through 6E. Alderman Santi?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items, 6A through 6E as presented.
Thank you. Alderman Shanti?
Alderman Shanti.
Sir?
I apologize, Mayor. I had my hand up just with a question that Monty had handed out from our meeting notes, and I think it was presented to everybody, so I just wanted to make sure that that was included in that motion.
Yeah, so in the motion, there's a change in the executive session there, so there are more for you to connect this evening, so.
All right, that's fine. Second?
Yes. Alderman Strach? Questions, comments? Clerk, please call Rob.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is 7A, is a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a five-year contract agreement with Flood Brothers Disposal Company for municipal refuse hauling services. Director Strange, you want to go?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we want to have the public commenters go now or after?
After, after the motion.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So as you all are aware, we went through several, we actually began a public first committee meeting, and then we went away from committees, had a few more discussions at the city council level regarding whether or not to go out for a new RFP or negotiate with the existing caller. We settled on a specific scope of services after some deliberation prior to the new year, right around the new year, prior to the new year, and then we released it in mid-January, accepted results. In mid-February, we received two proposals, and based upon the pricing results, we are recommending an extended contract with Flood Brothers Disposal of Oak Brook Terrace. A couple of things to point out. I know there's a lot of discussion about continuing of the sticker program and the yard waste drop off, which we actually went away from, went to the unlimited yard waste. That, I was concerned that that was going to negatively affect our pricing, the unlimited yard waste, it really didn't. So that was, that was good to see. We did get sticker pricing, but we did have a few haulers make a specific note, and Waste Management actually provided a letter stating that they were not going to be putting in because of stickers and that the industry kind of going away from those sticker programs, and then also the lead vacuuming program. So that's in there for your reference. So if possible, in the future, we may start to kind of specify ourselves out of where the industry is a little bit. We're very pleased with the results we got from this round of it, but we just would like you to be aware that we do continue to be as specific, we're getting certain elements of our services. We could start to price or scope ourselves out of where the industry is really at. So we seek your concurrence with the recommendation toward Flood Brothers for a five-year contract.
Thanks, Troy. Before we go for a motion, Josh, would you like to say something, or?
Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Josh Pottle with Lake Shore Recycling Systems, and this is a little unusual for me, because as the incumbent, usually I know some of the faces, but we just purchased Prairie Land Disposal five months ago. We are a local company operating in 10 states, but it is a little tough for us, since we don't have that relationship. And staff did a great job, as Troy said, with some of the limited specifications. I think they did a great job at putting this together. And one thing I want to point out is that if the city is committed to the sticker program, I would agree with that. I would recommend Flood Brothers as well. I think their price point is compelling difference to go through any kind of transition, and any interruption you may have with the transition will be limited. They're a fine company, and I would recommend that as well. But if it's purely on price, we put together, in our alternative, an extremely compelling price, especially knowing that we are new to the relationship, we put together an all-cart program that will be cheaper for the whole community. As a company, we build fewer dollars, it'd be less revenue for us on an annual basis with our cart program than the sticker program. So if it's purely about dollars, I just want to point out that that cart program that we put together is more compelling. We've already got about 60, 70% of the carts already out on the street. We just have to provide garbage carts for about 50% of the community, but I just want to leave you with that thought. And answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions?
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I guess one of the questions I had, did you, if you were to have gotten the proposal, would you have operated the same way that you have in the last few years, or being a different company, home now, that with the nuts and bolts, let's say, of the way Prairie Land ran, would be changed?
I can honestly say I don't think we would change much. There's probably a few things that I don't know about that we may change. I started Lake Shore Recycling Systems 21 years ago. We've been a disruptor in the northern Illinois market. We currently have about 40 to 50 municipal contracts. We understand how important it is to provide good service. This is a service that touches every single home. We don't want phone calls getting to you guys, especially the staff. And so the way we operate, and what's made us successful, is providing excellent service. In this case, too, you've got services that aren't the norm, with the back service, which we do have familiarity with, the sticker program, which we do have familiarity with, and I do understand why waste hauler is going way from that. It's just a lack of productivity, it's workers' comp issues that are just becoming more and more expensive. It's a tougher service to provide, more on the waste hauler to manage and be successful doing that program. But we would operate the same. We plan to keep in that local office that we have, which is currently based in Wakanda, and we believe it is a local business, and we have to operate it locally and have that good relationship with the community.
All right. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your time. Let me just, one last thing. If you do make the change with Flood Brothers, we will operate up until the last day with good service, and we will, we will work with Flood Brothers on a good transition. So thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, looking for a motion to approve 7A as presented? Alderman Santi?
I'll make the motion to approve 7A as presented.
All set. Alderman McClatchy? For a second? Discussion by council? Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, two things. Dr. Strange, you mentioned that we're gonna maybe think about going away from stickers. We've got a five-year contract with them, right?
Correct.
So we're not going to do anything for five years.
Correct.
So we will have essentially the same program we have always had, with the exception that we are now going to have unlimited yard waste at curbside and no Saturday drop off. So we got pretty much exactly what we were hoping for in terms of results, and people shouldn't notice any sort of change in terms of expectations for stickers and service pricing options.
Thanks. And as far as recycling totes, there's two. So you have your option. I was a little confused, and it said you can have one, but then you have a month with no charge?
Yeah, so that's, and that's, that's pretty much has been the standard practice in the past transitions as well, is that residents would be given a size that would be assumed they would take, and if they wanted to change from that assumed size, they would have a month in the contract to change.
So if someone has a small one, and they want a, if they're a 95-gallon, that's going to be a charge?
I'd have to do a little more digging into the contract.
Oh, it's bad.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, I think the point has been, in mass, at the start, there was a desire to make every effort to get it right the first time around, people were set with the cropper bin for the duration of the contract. But I don't think people are going to be locked into their size forever if they're really going to adjust.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Glad?
Yeah. I think the difference is there is the cost between the two.
You know, you look at them, and I don't know if I'm reading that right or not, like on the bank program, year one, how much per?
Was three times, Lake Shore Recycling is 3.85, and then the 95-gallon toter is $20.95 versus 25.80. One of the compelling reasons, honestly, about the pricing of Flood Brothers is that also, if you go up to year five, it actually escalates fairly slowly. The year five pricing is actually cheaper than what we're paying right now.
Is there any opt-out for the city if they don't give us the service that we expected?
We do have certain provisions in the contract, and then we always have the right to go out again in year five.
Yeah, but I mean, how tight is that? I mean, let's just put it this way, I have like 400 pages that have been up here, and I know it is difficult for the community when we change one service to another. And so anytime we change a service, that's what sticks in my back of my mind, is the problems we have when we made the change. I want to be sure that whatever we do tonight will not disrupt the, and I'll be honest with you, Prairie Land was an excellent service out of all the years that I've seen, and all the contracts they were involved in. And not to downgrade anybody, because they all did good jobs, but Prairie Land was outstanding. You know, we had complaints at the beginning, and in most cases, it was from employees of other companies or whatever, that were complaining about, you know, things that really didn't seem appropriate to what Prairie Land was doing. And I have to see them take it awfully easy, ask them, I'll take care of everybody, and I just hate to see it go because of cost, but I can understand that there's something to be, I just want to be sure that, because we're saving money, and we should save money because we get the residents with other taxes and whatnot, the fact that we're still going to get the same service that we had, then I think that needs to be, if this motion goes through, that that's periodized, just a company that, that's what we respect.
Understood. We did follow up with their references, particularly the local ones, that are the most similar communities to us, who've just recently gone Flood Brothers for the past, say, five years. So all the responses were positive. What's a common theme for all of them was that they all spoke very well of their customer service and particularly. All right, that's, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Miller?
I just wanted to thank you, Director Strange, for this process. As my first trash contract, it was a learning experience, and I appreciate your patience and your tolerance of my need for knowledge. So thank you. I thank you for the explanations that are not on your grid for, again, educational purposes. And I think when we got the results back, it was interesting when we compare apples to apples, and that's exactly how the RFP requested it, and that's exactly how we got it back, and I appreciate that. And Josh, thank you very much for your alternative, but just to give you that explanation, our residents absolutely are demanding a sticker. absolutely are demanding a sticker. So, although I appreciate your effort in giving us the alternative of an all tote community, that ain't happened in here yet. But thanks. But thank you, Troy, for your giving me all the information and the hours that you spent on the phone with me on this project. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
You know, the only other comment I want to say, I'd like to say, please pass on, at least for me, I know, and I'm sure the rest of the council would probably say the same thing, at least those that were here for the last several years. A big gratitude for the service that we've given. I've had enough of compliments for Prairie Land and the, and the people that work for Prairie Land. And I really did appreciate the service we got. And think about it, maybe whether it's the next contract, whether it's bags or maybe there's an alternative, you know, not everybody necessarily wants the bag, but they don't want to be paying for high prices for totes that they don't really feel in, you know. They only need the size for a bag or whatever. And, you know, times change, renovations, you know, technology and whatnot. Maybe you'll come back with a better proposal next time and something that's new and different. So, again, thank you for your service.
Any other questions, comments by council? We'll open up for public input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? All right, going back to council. Nice opportunity for questions, comments? Nope. Please call the roll.
Alvin McLeachy?
Yes.
Alvin McLeachy?
Yes.
Alvin McLab?
Yes.
Alvin Strach?
Yes.
Alvin Devine?
Yes.
Alvin Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Congratulations, Flood Brothers. Look forward to working with you. Next item on the agenda is seven B, is a motion to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two tax increment finance budget in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars and waive the formal bidding process to accept the local from Ruski's Marine Construction in the amount of five hundred fifty thousand dollars, nine hundred and three, no, fifty, five hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents for the construction of the Riverwalk from north of Pearl Street Bridge to south of Weber Park. Craig Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Excited to be before you decide to introduce this item. It's something we talked about back in the fall, in October, at the October eighteen city council meeting. We first introduced the topic when we had to pursue the idea of additional engineering fees. At this point, we had taken it to eighty percent for the section from the one-twenty bridge all the way to Weber Park. And so, I think we've had pretty good luck. I wouldn't say luck. It's hard work through John Smith, his volunteer working, kind of leading that project and his expertise. And being able to piece, piece miller project as we did with Miller Point and as well as with the section, I guess, adjacent to Miller, Miller's dream rate, that portion as well, in breaking into pieces and accomplishing what we can. For this, for this process, we did finish all the engineering in December, late December, actually probably closer, early January. Went through those plans, had to make a few amendments to those plans. Through the process, it was extremely important to us that we're dealing with quality people, people that we've dealt with in the past and people that we can count on. For that reason, we had selected, pre-selected or pre-qualified three, three contractors, Shoreworks, Shoreworks, Ruski's Marine Service, and McKenney Pier. They gave us the opportunity to work with people that we have existing relationships with, as well as people that are fairly local, maybe not be exactly McKenney, but the local people. For that, so once we put those, put the bid documents together, we put it in their hands and opened those bids on February fourteenth. The numbers unfortunately were higher than what we expected them to be and higher than what the engineer estimate it was. And through this process, we did have one contractor that requested to bow out. He didn't feel that he'd meet the time requirements as our goal is to have this done by July first so that we don't impact those businesses boating season. Obviously, after the Fox has a big following there, we feel that Grinders and House also could be impacted by that boat, any impact on the boat season. And so having that done, as early as we could, we have that done was important to us. Once we got those numbers, I think they were like five eighty-seven is where they came in at. We did some negotiations with the little bidder at that point, which was Ruski's Marine Service. We were able to save about thirty-six thousand dollars by a couple of small tweaks, things like removing gates from piers that we didn't feel were necessary at that point. And a couple, a couple of other small things that we were able to save some money. That's, that's the five fifty is where we got to, five fifty-nine oh three thirty-four. There's two other elements that need to happen along with this contract, however, that are not addressed in the Riverwalk plans themselves, and that's the connection back to, back to Riverside Drive adjacent to Pearl Street and a connection to the sidewalk in Weber Park. As you were, we put in, we called it piers of Weber Park, and we do introduce the service to not connect to the existing sidewalk that's in the park while we're, you know, there's a, I think there's a good chance that there could be additional public piers present at Weber Park. And so for right now, we just wanted to simply connect and determine sort of Riverwalk to the existing sidewalk there. And then, again, as well, Pearl Street, important to get those connections back to the street, keep that flow going both ways out to the street and those storefronts as well as to the Riverwalk. I know John Smith is here. If you have any questions for him or John, if there's anything that you'd like to add to what you did well. Thank you. And so, yeah, even back, even back in October, we did say, at that point, we had an estimate, but we did not do any budget amendment. Now that we have those hard numbers, know exactly what that's at. That's where, that's the request for the last part of this, is the request for the budget amendment. With that, have you answered any questions you have?
Thank you, Bill. Any questions, comments? Alvin.
Yeah, where are we as part of the tip right now? This is gonna come out of the tip punch and it's not like really we need to bond this, right? This is coming right out of this.
Right.
We have.
Correct. We have over seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Verify that. By the last check, it was over seven hundred thousand dollars. So, no bonds incurred in this at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alvin.
It's, with the Riverwalk, it's a significant move in regards to getting this section done. I know it's, I don't know how else to put it, sort of on the piecemeal side. I appreciate the, the work that the committee and John did and John working along with Bill, Bill working along with Derek and Mayor, getting this thing to move forward. And it's, it's nice that we'll have this and the completion date is, is an aggressive one and that's fantastic. Hopefully, we'll make it in on time. I guess one thing, and it's, it's a discussion I had with, with Bill earlier, but I'll ask the question just so everybody understands it. When I looked at the drawings on this section, we are placing a sidewalk walking path. Now, I'll try to describe this as best as possible from the corner of Pearl and Riverside Drive on the northeast corner, heading back down towards the Riverwalk so it'll connect to the, and norm around the building writers right now.
Correct.
That is part of this and that will be built at this time.
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. And the only thing I could say then is, is just an observation is that we'll, we'll physically have a Riverwalk that connects everything with everybody else, except for the fact that one block will have to go one block west, just to get on the west side of, of the buildings, bimbos, little shop, oxal. Go up there, walk one block north, come back down and get back to the Riverwalk. So, it'll be unique. I mean, hopefully, we'll have the other section done very quickly. But I like that there is an actual connection, like a conduit going from, from, you know, from point to point. And I appreciate that and, and thanks again for all the work you guys did, especially you two and your complete job. Thank you. Just to touch on that, I just wanted to, anticipate putting some money into the tip, tip request, cap request for the hundred to take us from eighty percent to a hundred percent engineering on that last section. So, that this, this coming year will be a planning year and that within two years, we hopefully have that finished off. Obviously, we'll work with property owners. That'll be the key thing there. But the goal is then to finish that, keep that momentum going as the tip is healthy right now. It's generating some revenue on an annual basis for us to be able to utilize to improve our downtown.
Yeah, you know, when we first started the tip, the idea was to get grant money for the Riverwalk. And we looked at to, I know at that time, all the doors were shut in our base as far as any kind of money's available. And we looked recently, kept up with that to try and grab anything. We got ahold of Wilcox, Senator Wilcox, or whatever.
We had had some discussions with Senator Wilcox. The only thing that we've been close to falling into or aligning for us has been some of the I-CAP monies as it relates to like a bike path. But we're not truly a bike path, so it doesn't really fit into that. But we continue to explore any that we can, especially through the assistance of John and through H.R. Green, who's been, with their knowledge and background on this, has been helping us along.
Okay, don't worry. We are shaking in tune to any possible available grant money that might be out there.
The best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? Alvin McLeachy?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Motion by Alvin McLeachy, second. Alvin Strach, second. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? John?
I just got one thing. This one will be pretty exciting, I think, because it's gonna have a little bit, a different look to it because it's gonna have an elevated, or elevated poles that will have string lighting connecting them. And that's what we plan on doing all the way along the back of Riverside Drive. So, when you, excuse me, when you cross the bridges, you'll see all this lighting in the back. So, it's gonna look really cool.
The cafe or bistro type lighting for that, that, can't wait.
John, I want to thank you. I know it's not easy always to work with these business owners and make sure that they're aligned, as we all know, but I appreciate all the work that everybody's put into this and bill.
I thought you were gonna say work with me.
I mean, that's, that's where I thought you were going. I tell them that often, but I didn't say it at this meeting. But, no, I, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
All right, click.
Please, call the roll.
Alvin McLeachy?
Yes.
Alvin Strach?
Yes.
Alvin McLeachy?
Yes.
Alvin McLab?
Yes.
Alvin Devine?
Yes.
Alvin Miller?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is seven C, is a motion to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two park's developer budget, fund budget in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars and to execute the final design and engineering proposal for Hitchcock Design Group for the development of Miller Point Park. Craig Thompson?
This is not one we've necessarily talked about before. In January, I did headboard of the plan that we had done for the park, really with the impetus being the McKenney Riverwalk shops, formerly known as the tiny shops. McKenney Riverwalk shops has been an initiative that Doug Martin has, has been one of the leads on, or I guess you and Carl Belliato's with the high school, has really been the lead on the project. We've had so many discussions starting, when did we, it was probably this time last year that we started the discussions for the tiny shops and McKenney Riverwalk shops. In any case, we have explored so many sites and tried to do pluses and minuses of where these, where this initiative might land at. And the tiny shops initiative is an economic development tool for our downtown. The idea that you give a business owner or a startup business owner a space to be able to sell their wares for a summer, you know, twelve by twelve, twelve by sixteen space, that then they can get that following and take that even to make it a villa downtown, a brick and mortar shop downtown. I won't speak for Doug, but I think those are some of the hardest, aside from Big Box, those are probably some of our hardest spaces to fill at times. This initiative is not only one that will help us do that, but it's also an extremely collaborative issue with the chamber having some significant investment. I would say sweat investment at this point. They're putting a lot of the agreements and things together, the actual running of the shops. The high school will take this back to their students that use it as a building and a learning experience for their students. Our work lands with us is giving them a home. And I think when we landed on, at one point, we had talked about the parking lot that you can see on the plan that's on the west side of Riverside Drive. It kind of tucked away over in the corner and probably wasn't the best spot for it. They would just get lost over there. Having it at the end of Riverside Drive really creates that, almost that destination. So, when you're driving through that intersection and you look down the road and you can see this initiative, you can see the tiny shops, you can still see the Riverwalk Bridge and it's something that's gonna pull you down there. That's, that's what we need for the site to continue to develop that. And so then, along with the, the site development for the tiny shops, there was also a lot of elements that needed to occur. We needed to have a permanent restroom down there to, to account for this project. And then it was important, we've seen what that site can become within the last year where you have a, a number of events down
Any opportunities for economic development? Let's launch some cool ideas, parks and rec use, community use. It just, it just puts a whole bunch of great ideas in a spot that just screams, here we are. So, I think just the incorporation of the multitude of ideas and venue use, it's, it's a perfect, it's a perfect application for that site. So, I was thrilled when I saw this and said, yes, yes, yes. And the, and your point of you're at the corner of Riverside and one-twenty and you're looking down the street, you know, right now you look down the street to see the bridge and it just sucks you in. So, when you look down there and you see the tiny shops and you're gonna go, what's that? It's kind of like when you drive by Coach Kringle Market and you go, what's that? And you try to find a parking spot because you, you just have to be part of it. That's what's gonna happen here. And we've got parking over on Port Street. We've got parking over on Park. So, there's plenty of parking in that downtown area. The people are just gonna find a parking spot and they're gonna walk there. And it's gonna be fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You brought up Kringle Market. That's one of the things that I, I think I touched it on in the supplement. But this isn't just a, you know, just a summer initiative. This isn't just something that's gonna occur then. But the goal is to bring a Kringle Market to down there. These shops could house that. And so it becomes, or, you know, even the possibility where you see the turf area, that could be an area that could be flooded for a potential ice rink. So, some of those things that...
So, you, you planned for ten shops down there. I, I see a waitlist from opening day of people getting in there, starting their shops, getting a gathering. These are gonna be your local artisans. These are gonna be your cottage industries making that next step into that small shop. And once they find a following, they're gonna move into the next one. So, your narrative of it's, it's a progressive industry, that's what's gonna happen. So, you're gonna have a waitlist of people who see success and they're gonna wanna be all over this. So, good idea. Way to go.
This, this has been such a collaborative effort. I mean, I mean, Bill, you know, we, we had McKenney Riverwalk shops. When he saw the vision for, for the entire area, he said, these have to be woven into the park as, as one. When he saw the vision for, for the entire area, he said, these have to be woven into the park as, as, as one. And then that's what, you know, Hitchcock was brought into the, of the fold and then this, this plan was born. And, and this is what's before you and, and it's really turned out to be a phenomenal plan. And I, I, I think it'll be a phenomenal project.
Well, even your timing, some of the vendors that are at Pearl Street Market are gonna migrate right from Pearl Street Market and, and be your vendors here.
Sure.
Because they've already progressed from being a tent.
Yeah.
Because I need a shop.
Yeah.
Where I can lock the door and be there more than one night a week. So it's a great progression.
Any other questions, comments by counsel? No? Opening up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Clerk, please call roll for seven C.
Alderman, Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Strach.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman McClellan.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, uh, Doug. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, seven D is a motion to approve or deny a Class C liquor license to Heavenly Liquor and Tobacco located at thirty twelve West Illinois Route one-twenty and have approved pass an ordinance amending, uh, Title Four, Chapter Two, Alcohol and Liquor Section Six, License, Classification and Fees, Approval Authority, Limitation on Number of Licenses. Did I administer a motion?
Sure, sure. I'll just, uh, give some information on this. So there's an existing, uh, business, um, Heavenly Cloud Smoke and Bait Shop at three zero one two West Route one-twenty. And, uh, the existing business owner wants to discontinue, uh, this business and turn the, with some, uh, structural modifications, uh, turn this into a liquor store with a small amount of vape products and renaming it Heavenly Liquor and Tobacco. Just to clarify, the, the liquor license being requested is a Class C, which, uh, as a reminder, that's a package only liquor license. So there'll be no eligibility for, uh, for gaming or anything like that. This location will basically operate as a, as a liquor store with a small amount. And by small amount, I mean that, uh, per code, they're only able to, uh, utilize less than two percent of their gross floor area uh, for vaping. And as you can see in the supplement, uh, there'll be some structural changes, uh, to the building with, uh, knocking a wall out, making it a larger space than it is right now. So again, just, uh, they, uh, the, the business owner, uh, has passed the background check and I believe are here tonight to answer any questions the council may have. And so again, if you're in favor of this, uh, we'll take a motion to approve a Class C liquor license to Heavenly Liquor and Tobacco at thirty twelve West Route one-twenty and amend ord- uh, pass an ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Two, to, uh, to add a, a Class C liquor license.
Thank you for that information. Sure. Any, uh, at this time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve seven D as presented. Alderman Miller?
I'll make that motion to approve seven D as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Santi?
I will second the motion.
All right, questions, comments regarding this item? Alderman Santi?
Uh, yeah, um, either Director Moorefield or, uh, uh, people, uh, that are gonna operate the business. Newer, larger store. When I drove by and I took a look at it over the weekend, um, there's like three.
Sir, can you, can you stop to the podium?
Are, are, are they gonna take over that whole building?
That's just A and B.
Just A and B?
Can you state your name and address for public comment?
Yes, uh, so sorry, that, uh, Mayor and all the city member council. My name is Retesh Patel. And, uh, we are located at three zero one two Route one-twenty, McKenry, Illinois. And, yeah.
So, so the question from the Alderman is, are you taking over the, I think there's three, three units in that building.
Yes.
A, B and C. Are you taking over the whole building or just A and B?
Just A and B.
Okay, so then, I, I, I'm sorry, and then that is stupid, and the next space is still.
So the number C would be like, uh, upper, right? Yes.
Yes, so that's, okay, potentially some other business.
Yeah.
Uh, hours of operation. Is there restriction here or, for, like, her licensee? Is there a restriction?
Same as all Class C, my question.
Which is?
Six AM, the, I don't know. Six to one and then, I don't know.
No, that's, no, that's, that's where it's on.
That was different, yeah.
I can look it up. It's the same as all Class C package.
Okay, so we're not?
Yeah, any gas station, any standalone and any, uh, commercial groceries?
And, and that's, uh, Mr. Patel, he makes, you know, he'll decide on his hours as long as he still.
Yes, so we might be changing the hours. At the moment, we are operating from like, uh, ten to, uh, uh, ten to ten.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Alderman McClellan?
Yeah, questions for City, but I'm sure more to go, yeah. Uh, most all our motions are, uh, motions to approve, motions to approve, motions to approve. This one says approve or deny. And right away, that just throws a question in my mind, uh, was it because you, you wrote it differently than most everybody else writes it or what? Because I'm just wondering if I'm missing something, because it seems like a win position.
Yeah.
It's for sure. And, and we've, we've, so staff has had this discussion and we've started to try to include approve or deny, especially for liquor licenses as we release a number of licenses in certain categories.
Want to provide counsel the opportunity to make either motion to approve it or deny it. We're not opposed to it. Uh, in fact, we've had a number, I know Monty's had a number of discussions with Mr. Patel. We have done staff wise to, uh, to make sure, uh, you know, what the request was gonna be and we have no issues with this at all.
Okay, like I said, it just kind of stuck out there and I just had to ask that question. Thank you.
That's, that's not what he told me. He told me he was wondering if anybody reads his stuff.
All right, all right. Is there any other question? Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Maybe.
All right, uh, any public comment regarding this item? No? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Miller, yes. Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman McClellan.
Yes.
Alderman Strach.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda is seven, uh, seven E is a motion to approve an ordinance granting zoning variations for a Wingstop restaurant at forty-two thirteen West Elm Street. Director Pollarick?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, petitioner, uh, is requesting approval of the following zoning variations for the operation of a Wingstop dining restaurant located at forty-two thirteen West Elm. Uh, variance to allow seventeen parking spaces in lieu of the required forty-five spaces, a variance to allow a six foot four inch interior side yard setback along the west lot line in lieu of the required twenty-five foot. Um, variance to allow twenty-five foot front yard setback in lieu of the required thirty. Uh, variance from the residential screen strip, design standards along the west property line where the current Fort McKenry Park is. Uh, and variance from a parking, a perimeter landscaping, building landscaping and then any other zoning, uh, variations to accommodate the pulls. The applicant is here tonight, uh, to answer questions. I will tell you, staff, we had, um, quite a bit of discussion about the parking. Uh, you know, uh, our ordinance would require forty-five spaces, but as we look into other communities, um, you know, we are about a hundred and fifty percent greater in our required parking, parking spaces for a business, uh, like this. So, you know, we feel that the petitioner would not be requesting and investing the amount of money that they are to tear down a building and put up a new building with the parking and not support their business. A lot of their business is carryout, um, therefore the seventeen parking spaces, uh, we feel is sufficient. So I'm here to answer any questions along with the petitioner.
Thank you, Ross. Uh, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve seven E as presented. Alderman Strach?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments by counsel? Alderman Strach?
Just to touch on what Director Pollarick said, sitting in the planning and zoning chair for nine years, this was always a topic of conversation. The fact that our parking ordinance is higher than the, than what it likely should and needs to be. I think it's probably something that will be talked about until we do a revamp of that ordinance, but I think that parking, we're always highly restricted on everything that came across our desk. So I think it's feasible that they're, you know, the, the number that they're looking at is probably really realistic and as Director Pollarick said, the other communities are significantly less in requirement than we are.
Thank you. Alderman McClellan?
Yeah, as far as these parking requirements, one of the things that, yeah, a lot of people are forgetting is that's the fact that, uh, the three piece proper prior planning and we never did. And you take a look at a lot of communities that don't require as much parking and they have done an excellent job of one, one shopping center adjusting to another shopping center, so shared uses and whatnot. Uh, if you take a look at some of this phenomenal planning that was related to off fourteen. And like I said, yeah, any of these businesses that open up, there's plenty of, uh, of parking there. Uh, for us, it's a little different. Sometimes it, it makes it difficult. You take a look at this site right here and seventeen parking spots. Question. And again, the petitioner is willing to gamble that there's gonna be enough parking there. Uh, I take a look and I'm thinking, well, with that fence up and everything else, nobody's gonna park in a park and then walk all the way around to get there and nobody's gonna be parking across Route one-twenty either. So it's gonna be, uh, it's a parking issue for his business and it, he's the one that's gonna suffer in this, in this case. Uh, but yeah. We have the ability to lower our standards, uh, on, on parking as far as with variances. Uh, but I think if we reduce the parking restr- you know, requirements, uh, in the city of McKenry, it gives us less chances of, in certain cases, of reducing, uh, a business as far as the amount of, uh, parking. In other words, if we say that seventeen is fine for this site building, then we can't say, well, no, 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 you gotta have twenty-four, you gotta have thirty. Because our ordinance says that you can have just seventeen. So, but if it says that we have to have forty-five, then yes, then they have to come to counsel and then we have to reduce it. If we feel that it's worth reducing. This one is very questionable. I'll tell you right now, I'm not really too keen with the idea of reducing it except for the fact that I remember when this building was approved, it was before I was on the council, I never thought it was a great idea. Um, it did get through the, the council and other than the currency exchange, even at the currency exchange, it really wasn't a great location and I'm just hoping that business like this does work. It's a very, very difficult, uh, property right there unless they were to acquire and build with the adjoining, uh, Easterly property. The only way that I could see this, uh, property being able to open up any kind of business with that, that type of, uh, parking restrictions. So I, I can understand the seventeen there. The only question is that I really have a problem with, and I, I've had this with McDonald's that I've seen and, and several others. Uh, and it was addressed, uh, in our package as far as deliveries. Uh, I would like it to where we will not allow to have delivery trucks after the opening hours of this business because it's gonna be difficult enough, uh, for people to get, get a route through there and then to have trucks, uh, possibly park in there and trying to make a three-point turn to get out. Be crazy. You know, I wouldn't wanna park my car back there knowing that there's a, uh, a straight, uh, sixteen footer that's back there that's gonna try and back up and, and around, uh, in that parking lot. So that's the only reservation I have on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McClellan? This is the petitioner here?
Yeah.
Yes. Trevor Clements?
On both sides.
Yeah. Hey, can you state your name and, uh, address for public comment, please?
I'm Trevor Clements. Uh, my address is three hundred Spruce Street, Columbia, Illinois.
That's Steve Fuller, eight twenty-eight Davis Street, Evansville, Illinois. Thank you. Just got a quick question. What's, what do you think your percentage from drive-through to people parking, your customers parking?
So we will not have drive-through. Uh, in our business model, it's, uh, walk-up and eighty percent of our transactions are online or delivery orders. So those people are coming in, grabbing an order based on the timeframe they were told to come and pick up the order and then they leave. So that twenty percent balance are the people that choose to dine in, which of course we haven't had over the last two years, but, um, we do about a hundred and fifty transactions a day in our other restaurants across Illinois. So that puts us at about thirty people dining in daily between the hours of eleven AM to midnight.
That's it?
Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Santi?
Yeah. Kind of following up on the dining inside, uh, question, how many, what's, what, what's total number of seating inside that you'll have?
I think our capacity at this restaurant is around eighteen to twenty seats.
Okay. And, uh, Wingstop is a, is this a franchise?
Yes.
Okay. So for you to get a franchise approval for this location, you had to go through the corporate?
That's correct.
They had to approve this design, this location, so on and so forth?
Yes.
Prior to getting them to sign up for you? Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that if, if I would understand that in regards to, uh, franchise. Uh, and this is a total tear-down, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, I, I guess the only thing I have is, if it passes tonight, what's, what's your timeframe?
We're right now looking at last quarter of this year.
Okay. How many, if, if I may ask, how many Wingstops do you two gentlemen operate at all?
I'm the vice president of operations of thirty-seven stores, thirty of which are in Illinois and we have, uh, the balance in Indiana and a couple of Michigan.
Gotcha.
I should die for him.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I hope no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, uh, questions, comments for staff? Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Miller, yes. Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman McClellan?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation and adoption of McKenry Downtown Streetscape Program. Uh, Director Pollarick?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just gonna introduce these two fine gentlemen here real quick. Uh, if you remember or recall, about a year ago, uh, city council, uh, approved to enter into a contract with Christopher Burke Associates for a complete downtown streetscape design. Um, through the course of the last year or so, we've had public meetings, um, input from, uh, local, uh, residents as well as business owners in the downtown. And, uh, John Heinz, who stays at the podium, and Doug Gotham, uh, behind him, they put together a presentation for you tonight. Uh, a lot of hard work went into this, this design and they, uh, they're gonna give, give you the, uh, presentation now.
How you doing?
I'm doing well.
All right.
So good evening, Mayor Jack. Counsel, uh, counsel people and, uh, staff, um, we're really excited to be here. Um, as we, uh, are even more thrilled that you selected us to, uh, help you through this process. Um, it's, uh, says on the agenda item, the presentation and adoption of the McKenry Downtown Streetscape Program. So we will present and I've had, I think, about three or four people ask us to make it very brief, which is not my forte. So I'm gonna turn this over to Doug in a minute here. Um, but, uh, we're really hopeful that you, uh, uh, will like the, the plan and, and, uh, part of this plan, I know you all have. Um, and will adopt, uh, adopt the plan this evening. Um, we'd like to thank, uh, you for the opportunity. We'd also like to recognize staff that we've worked with, uh, throughout this process. Uh, virtually every department, uh, has been involved in it, which is understandable. And, um, we've received, received great guidance, um, and input, um, from them as well as all of you as elected officials. And then the public has obviously been involved in the various, uh, processes that we use. Um, I've been through a lot of these in my, in my career and, um, it's unusual to have to do this all virtually, which is what we had to do. But I also thought it worked out pretty well because we got a lot of good input. You, everybody could see the. You, everybody could see the exhibits, they weren't squinting or having to come up and look at various things. Um and we got a lot of good comments. So um with that, I'd like to turn the the uh true presentation over to Doug Gotham. He's our landscape architect. He's done a ton of these projects and will kind of talk to you about what we've done in the past and what happened at the end of this presentation.
Thank you, John. Echo John, it's been a bit of a enjoyable process for me to work with the staff and to to work with the the community and to visit all the sites and see all the issues and to get the opportunity to design. I I love to design. It's one of the things I enjoy doing with Christopher Burke. And you have unique challenges, which gave me the opportunity to find unique solutions. And we went through the process and we we had a purpose for the design or for the the whole planning process. And that's outlined there. As John said, I'll try to keep this brief. We're at the end of the presentation and you all have the the study before it, so I won't recash all the text there. You know, the goal was trying to create a unified blending of the different areas, but yet to have them each have their own separate characters. And then we had these specific objectives and goals and obviously we wanted to maximize the downtown area to its fullest possible extent, all three of them. And then to create them in a vibrant way, you know, bring the life to them. And then make them each unique, but yet unified in appearance. And then, of course, we have to, you know, think about the materials used, the equipment used, the the very design itself in that aspect. And then towards the end, there you see one of our things, I'll keep touching on this, is to meet the ADA accessibility requirements. Because that's one of the biggest challenges we're seeing in streetscape designs today is that we have to address that as a public bond and with businesses as well. So as John said, we had various meetings. We had two public meetings, several uh three street committee meetings. And then we had internal meetings, both here outside and virtually with the staff and leading up to tonight. And then we talked about the components, so what we wanted on the site and where we wanted it. And we did this through the planning stage. You'll see a prettier picture in your um report there. But basically, we looked at all the components that go into making a streetscape. And we let the community vote on those and that's the ranking that you see there. Which the the highlighted blue ones are the ones that receive the highest. Then we took that information and we followed that into the design process. There you see them more graphically illustrated. Where we talked about uh the paving, the paving for the sidewalks, the trees, the planters, biking, trash receptacles, the seating. And then we looked at each one of the sections. There's the existing Main Street. You can see the challenges we have with that. You're all totally aware of it, so I won't recash that. And one of the main things we had there, and you can just pick it out there in that cross-section, is, and you can see it better in the photographs, the stoops that descend down into the public right-of-way. Now, remember, our task was to design the streetscapes for not only this area, but for the all throughout this area. You know, Riverside, Green Street, um East Waukegan Road, East Main Street, you know, residential area. We can only go within the right-of-way, from building face to building face. And in that cross-section there, if you look down across the bottom, you can see those little red squares. Those are the steps, and you can see it in the photographs, that descend into that right-of-way area, which are making those areas both of the challenge ADA and a challenge in just physical space, as you can see in that top uh photo. Between that stoop and that tree, how much room there is for a person to pass through there. So our challenge was to create more real estate so we could gain more opportunities for businesses to move out. And we saw that during COVID, especially on Main Street, where the bars and the restaurants moved out into the street. So this is the plan that we came up with and you see it better in the report. Basically, on Main Street, what we're doing here is creating a gateway entrance, which I'll show on the next slide. But it moves to the west, one way to the west, um all the way past the law greens. And then you can see we're sort of creating a uh the cul-de-sac element there, there far western edge to where the train station is. So you take it from there back to Route thirty-one, but it's one way to the west. But we have parking at both sides. And this allowed us to widen that. So we no longer had this little narrow six-foot wide corridor. But we were also able to gain enough real estate where we can adjust the grades. So we can make those either with ramps where we have three steps in or raise the grades so we can have flush access. And then allow movement out into and have furniture zones out into the street. This is the gateway element I'm talking about. Now, all of these designs are, how should I say this, dynamic. Meaning that, you know, what we dreamed up here is literally dreamed up here. Meaning that as we get further along in the planning phase, they all should be adjusted. They all should be addressed. Later on, I'll look at Riverside and just tonight, we talked about one, the Hitchcock Plan for the tiny shops, which will affect that, which is good. And you have the Riverwalk with the expansion further up where we go tying to Pearl Street, which will affect this plan that I have on the boards. So it it's a dynamic process. But right now, this is what I envisioned for our gateway element. And you can see how much wider we got across there and how much more room we got through that area. Here is Green Street. Again, we go from one-twenty over to uh Waukegan Road over there on the far lot. We have that corridor to work with. And again, we have this narrow, um in this case, two-two-way traffic of diagonal parking. And again, we have, but even more severe than Main Street, we have the step up on the west side of that area. And then we've got these various points in the process, these diagonal crosswalks, mid-block crossings, which I applaud you for doing. Uh unfortunately, I don't like the fact that they're out diagonal. I have relatives who are visually impaired and I'm not sure how they make it across that safely. But yet, it's still far above than some of the communities I work in. There we go. So on Green Street, we would keep the two-way traffic through there, both north and south. Would change the diagonal parking to parallel parking. In that process, we only lose one stall, which surprised me in that process, just figuring that out. But we would gain more real estate on both sides of that sidewalk so we could move shops out, especially along the north side. And then have more opportunities for benches and trees and things of that nature. And here's an illustration of what one of those might look like, where we would have the planters upgrade. And that goes back to what the planning process said, what the community said that they wanted to see. They didn't no longer want to see trees and grates. They wanted trees and planters and built-in seating. And that's what you see in that illustration there. Then we have Riverside Drive and we just talked about that, how you now have the planning at Miller Park and the tiny shops on the far left of that screen down there, which is a great idea, by the way. We're working uh with the Village of Huntley on that right now, similar concept. Here we have a much wider corridor, but at the suggestion of the staff, uh again, we also have on the, especially on the west side, again, two steps up in a portion of it to get to those shops. But here we were talking about the parking again, it would be diagonal. And the staff suggested that north section from one-twenty up to Pearl, we would make one way diagonal. And that allowed us to gain more real estate through that corridor and add more trees and benches and built-in planters and that sort of thing. On the south end, as I just said, we'll have to modify that design now to accommodate the new Hitchcock plan, which is fine, which is what should occur. What the the areas in the center of this is where I was, you can see it by the old boat shop there. We can regain a lot of real estate, yeah, right there on the east side. And in that space, we can do built-in seating, much like what the citizens said in their planning process. And I'm suggesting here that we can do a kiosk, a digital kiosk, where we can take those sign boards that both Main Street and Green Street and of course Riverside have now. They're talking about the history of the community and they can go into this format. So they're always fresh, always new, and they can be updated continually with commercials, if you'd like, or just community announcements. Algonquin just had two such structures at the end of their Main Street development. And then we were looking beyond the commercial centers. We looked at um East Main Street, the residential area. And for that, the, you can see the what it is today in the upper left. And then right beside that is something similar that we just did, you know, just as a relative term, three years ago in downtown Algonquin through their residential area on the south end of their streetscape. Where, and and I would see this happening in a short corridor. I wouldn't see this brick-type walk in the entire length of there from, you know, thirty-one to the high school. I would just see it through the face of the historic homes. So to add that character and to bring that sort of uh effect back. And then uh East Waukegan Road, I was looking at the new linkages, updating the crosswalks. But this is the one um east of the high school. This is where you're just approaching the townhomes. You haven't got there yet. They're on the upside of that image. And then I could see a new sidewalk as that, you know, hopefully, development occurs down by the old two-way street we planned along the south side of Waukegan Road. And we make it look like this where it meets ADA standards. And we use the decorative paving. And that's again going back to what the citizens said they wanted to see in those areas. It's more, it's, I shouldn't say more visible, it's better visibility for the traffic to see that there's a crosswalk there than the wearing of the paint that occurs there now. And then it brings again more character to that neighborhood. And then we have um Elm Street, one-twenty, that corridor. And that's pictured in the upper left. And in the lower left there is what we recently did, again, relative term, three or four years ago now. That's minor street displays where we can improve that appearance through there where the shops are really, really close to that back of curve. The challenge in that area is that as much as I can dream, as much as you might desire, there's a third party in the process that has to be respected. And that's where we're in the I-N-I corridor. And John has a lot of experience working with them, getting us through, you know, my designs through that permitting process. They have a say in what goes down through there and how it goes down. So I just briefly, Pearl Street, I think you've done an amazing job of Pearl Street. I like the new lights that you've gotten through there. I like the new crosswalk treatments that you've gotten through there. The only thing I would personally do, and this is just from many, many, many years of experience, is no longer do the stamped colored concrete. Phil's nodding in agreement.
Yes, I'm nodding in agreement.
I would, if you, if you want that effect, then by all means, go with the brick. And what we've learned over the years, and again, we've learned this the hard way, is that, you know, previously, all the rage was, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, it was unit pavement. And what you see here is brick on concrete. That stays, that lasts, that doesn't move or shift or, and the brick doesn't change color or fade. It's more expensive, but in the long-term maintenance, it's a better solution. Would you want to speak to us?
Thank you, John.
Thanks for giving me your time.
Thanks, Doug. Um so since I've been on this other side from where you guys sit, um you know, I've gotten to work with Doug on numerous projects and a very, very talented, got really nice vision and a lot of experience, which is just what you want. And I think is the reason why you guys hired us to to try and do this. So um you know, there's a lot of different elements that go into all the, this type of a project once you start moving into the actual, you know, design permitting and construction phases. And um you know, we're prepared to do that. Chris Burke Engineering has done a ton of these. Um I think one of the ones that was uh, you know, featured one that you guys liked was what we did in Batavia. Uh that was a number of years ago. And um I've been personally involved in the one that is down in Algonquin that is ongoing, we're doing different stages and phases of that. Huntley as well, uh Doug mentioned displays, and the list is is up there that you can go through. I've been on your side of the fence in both Barrington and in Liberty Grove. And um it's a little bit frightening and it's daunting. Um it's it's big, uh it's expensive, it's invasive. There's a lot of things about it. But I can also say that from my experience being on on your side of the dais, that uh it's exciting. And when it's done, you kind of look back and you go, wow. And then all of a sudden, your economic development director and and your your planning people are dealing with a lot of really exciting projects that come to your downtown and people want to come to this destination. And and it's not smoke and mirrors. I I've lived it, I've seen it happen. And um I, there's no question in my mind that the city of McHenry is is right for this. You've got the river, you've got the creek, you're doing, I I love the plan that Hitchcock came up with and you guys came up with with that that whole idea there, the Riverwalk. All these things play right into this. You know, you've got a need for some infrastructure improvements in all of these different corridors that we've looked at. You all know that. And and this is a a really, a big, beautiful leap to do that. And we're very hopeful you guys will adopt the plan and and uh we would, we stand ready, willing and able to help you out with all that. I think it was only five minutes.
Yeah.
So we're ready to answer any questions that you may have relative to this. So thank you.
Thank you. Want to open up for questions, comments?
Yeah, first question I've got is that why have Main Street go uh westwardly instead of eastwardly?
Well, can we go back to that slide?
Doug, let me just chime in on that real quick. So the Route thirty-one improvements that are happening within the next four years, there will be no left-hand turn off of Main Street and no left-hand turn northbound going onto Main Street.
Okay. I can understand that, but if we looked at how that's going to affect traffic as far as, let's say, even going through pretty high, you know, uh everybody's going to try and get back to thirty-one.
Well, so Borden Street is where you, you have a natural loop of Borden Street. So as you're coming down Main Street and you hit Borden, if you miss a parking spot, you can move back around, move around the law greens, come back.
Yeah, all the way around that way and if somebody, I don't know. I just kind of wondered what the, that you know, I think, John.
It's a good question.
Like Director Pollard said, just taking those three right turns, be able to loop around and not have to take any lefts at any, at any point. It is, it is a little bit of a longer route, but so the right turns are easier to make on any of those streets, easier than a left turn.
Any other questions? Alderman?
So my my only comment, and I apologize for the comment over here. I have thirty-two nieces and nephews and none of them know how to parallel park. And I sit in the car and I close my eyes and my comment to the alderman next to me was, oh my God, poor Chief Burke, the amount of crashes it's going to have on Main Street. Just just because I've been in the passenger seat when they've tried to do the whole forty-five, forty-two. I don't know when they stopped teaching it in Beverly Hills. But they don't know how to do it. They just, if it's not an angle park, they're like, what do you mean? Use your rearview mirror and back up on a forty-five degree angle. And then when you're halfway in, reverse your wheel. I'm like, don't they teach kids this crap? Seriously, we all sit here and that's how we learn and they don't learn this stuff anymore. So I, I was grateful that you said we only lose three parking spaces. Because I'm like, how can that be when you're taking an eight-foot to now a twenty-foot space? But I believe you. So that was my first, oh no, because we all hear, parking, 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 parking. So wherever we go with this, we have to defend the space because we have to have parking. I too am concerned about the one-way, not only on Main Street but Riverside Drive, because those are two direct thoroughfares, Riverside Drive being the in-and-out for that obviously area. And Main Street, we now have a potential development coming in on Mill Street that we have told them, we don't want you going through the subdivision. We want you going up Crystal Lake Road and/or Main Street. And if we do this, they can't go down Main Street. They have to go down Borden Street to get out.
Right.
So I have to look at this in a much bigger picture and say, if I'm in a car, how does this restrict my flow and how do I get out? Because frankly, people use those streets to get out and to get around. I mean, I use Main Street every day to get from my home to thirty-one. And he was just telling me I can't, which means I have to go up Borden Street and I have two more lights to get through versus no lights to get through. That changes my attitude in the morning. So I, I'm not sure that I'm a big fan of the one-way street thing, but I see your point that we only have so much real estate to work with.
But in Ida is going to impact that for the, we will.
Yeah.
They have the biggest effect on that, or will have.
But having sat through many of the meetings with you, I, I love how you've incorporated the ideas of the focus groups and the structures, the built-ins, the tree scapes and the overhead signage. I think that's beautiful. And I think your vision, your dreaming has come to fruition and bringing other people's hopes and dreams too. I just am concerned about flow and that's my only concern.
Any other questions? Alvin, is that it?
No, I, I definitely am very, very intrigued in this presentation and like what you've done. Like what you've done, not necessarily the drawings, how you have set, but I think you've done in regards to us being here and working with the groups and doing the Q and As and finding out what, you know, what's the preferences out there. On the Main Street, did you give us a, was there a loss of spaces on Main or how, do we have a number on that?
We do have that information.
It's out there?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in.
Okay, okay.
I don't know a lot, I have, but there is a lot.
Making comments as you're speaking, I would love to have that, this packet to really, not get spent some time with it, look it over. And then we can go over to Riverside Drive. Definitely very impactful in regards to, you know, you've got some unique, every component in regards to businesses over there, our restaurants too. Look at that exercise, not exercise place. And he's been there for thirty years. Get in the car, I got, I mean, he is, yeah, you know, nighttime classes. And I know, you know, there's marketing right behind them also in that alley. I get that, I understand that. It's, no, it's, it's a, it's a concept I really would love to just look at and understand more and more and ask questions to, you know, and then even going into discussions with businesses too. Because now this is public record, I don't know if a lot of these group discussions have business owners.
There were quite a few business owners.
Yeah, because I really would love to get their thoughts. And, yeah, and there's, I could break up, you know, half a dozen different places and just start Q and A in this, but I don't think this is the time to do that. I think it's, what we're doing is getting this presentation and maybe going through some thoughts of of all the council members, of the overall perspective of what this is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alvin Miller?
So I just asked Director Hobson, the material in our packet was a little vague on where we're getting fifteen million dollars.
Why do you have to talk about that?
It was all good until you mentioned that.
Good point.
I'm sorry.
Good point.
So I just said, where are we getting this money from? And he started to explaining to me where we're getting this money. And I said, hold off, I think everybody probably wants to know where we're getting fifteen mil. So Director Hobson, where are we getting fifteen mil?
There's a tree right around the hill, like right over here, that just, nobody would know as well.
Got it, I need that.
The logical funding source for this, honestly, is the TIP district. You know, we, we're in the process of extending the TIP. This would be a huge public undertaking, public dollars, infrastructure, public infrastructure. So the TIP is the logical funding mechanism for it. I'll put it in my two cents, just as we talk to another committee and Director, Mr. Morfield might chime, chime in and say something different, but I think the logical progression for us is to try to, at some point, prioritize where we start and do, you know, one piece and move on to the next, because there's always fluidity with developments or fluidity in those downtown areas. And so while we're asking you to adopt this plan in its entirety, I don't think that that means necessarily those plans are set in stone. We've already called out that things like Riverside Drive is going to have to change. But there's going to have to be a discussion where that happens. I think there is some opportunities for us to identify some funds for design work, to start that design work. As I discussed, there's also some, we have a positive flow right now for our TIP district. Now it's going to, you know, it competes with some other projects like the River Walk and including that, that last section of the River Walk. But that's the logical, the short answer is the TIP funds the logical funding mechanism for this project.
But one caveat to that is that Main Street's not in the TIP district.
Right.
And so, you know, we'll have to look at alternative funding for that, whether it be a general fund dollars or, you know, whatever it is. And that, you know, we did agree with this, or we did have this discussion staff-wise. You can't just wave the line and have it all done in two years. It's just not from a, from a, from a practical destruction standpoint, that can't happen. So we need to, again, we presented a potential prioritization, but that's not set in stone either. We, we as staff based, our recommendation for prioritization based on what was occurring in the surrounding area like Riverside Drive and along the Fox River, the River Walks being done there, Miller Point. It just seemed logical to focus on that one first, so that's the most momentum is there. But really, we would have to partition that over years, really, I mean, just to be honest with you. We're, phase one is three hundred thousand dollars. All right, well, we have to program three hundred thousand dollars for phase one, three hundred thousand dollars for phase two. Or maybe they're done within one budget year and we just bite off a chunk and then we follow that up with construction. Or we phase it, there's a potential phasing program recommended in here for how to do each segment in different phases in terms of engineering, phase one, engineering, phase two, and construction. And obviously, that's all going to be budget-driven. It's going to be based on what we have available, what we can recommend to staff without hurting other things that we do and do well. And obviously, council will be presented with that on an annual basis as part of the budget process, you know, for, for discussion. And that's why we didn't want to really get into how we fund every segment of it and try to identify a timeline tonight, because it's going to change, it's going to change in a way as soon as we walk out of here. But just look at the adoption of a plan that we can then bring to council based on funding.
I'm all into the whole big picture and the whole, it's going to be not less than seven bites of that apple. But that was just a really big number that I know we struggle with. And I just wanted to know that we were envisioning smaller bites of that apple? Because that's, that's just a lot, that's just a lot of money. And if we're going to create those kind of dollars, and I love your plan, but I also have a hundred twenty-six miles of road that needs some work. So I just, you know, being very fiscally responsible.
And you know we will be too.
Thank you.
Alvin, Director, anything?
Phil, maybe you can answer, is there grant availability? A larger percentage of grant availability for this type of project compared to what previously we talked about with the River Walk?
I, this is, I would defer to Director Strange, because I know he's got some insight on some grant opportunities for us specifically.
Right. So again, a few of these are federal aid routes. So ITEP is, the first thing that comes to mind, as Phil mentioned before. I believe in the back packet, there were some other funding sources that were referred to. There are other things, such as CVD and things like that. Some of the challenges with those types of funding is they're typically limited to a little bit more, I guess, disenfranchised, sense attract. Although I do think one of these locations is in one. So those, those are out there. How likely are we to get those, I can't answer that.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe Dartmoor was a, I bet you, Rob, wasn't it? And we talked about grant money for that, and it's what, three, four, or five years now that we keep talking about it? And it's never there, so. I agree, that's a big number there, all the person, Miller. But my concern is not just the development, but the maintenance that you're talking about. And be well worth it if we had all these bigger outfits coming in business-wise and we're going to bring in all these tax dollars and everything else, but I just don't see it. I don't see bigger chains coming in here, big-name stores and everything else. I like the concept, but I think it's a little too elaborate that we do. And I agree, a hundred and twenty-five miles of roads. You said some, it's a lot more than some, so. But I do agree, that is a big number. And I honestly think that we could take the concepts and just tone it down a little.
So I'm going to go the other direction on you, Andy, that I, I look at El Gaugwin and that downtown area, which is really much smaller than our downtown area, Two Streets. It was dead, dead as a doornail. And they invested in those two streets, they ripped them apart and they rebuilt them. And now it's vibrant. Every one of those buildings is occupied and growing. They're building new add-ons to those buildings because their community invested in their downtown water path and the two, and Main Street. And re-bricked it, they, they fortified it. I, I don't know how much they spent, I don't know if you were involved with that.
Yeah, we both.
But, I mean, they, they said, okay, we're dead in the water, we're going to reinvest in our downtown Two Streets. And it, it's amazing down there. I think this is an opportunity, it's a big number, there's no doubt there. But this is an opportunity for us to take our downtown areas and give it some continuity, yet some uniqueness to each of the streets, which was what the focus groups wanted. They wanted to respect the history, they wanted to give each a unique identity, yet tie them together so that each community could just grow. I think this will be the revitalization that Main Street needs. This is the continuance of the energy on Green Street and it just gives Riverside Drive the frosting that it's going to have once we finish down Miller Point. So I'm glad that this fifteen mil isn't like a one swoop, because we don't have that. But if it's one little bite at a time, we can accomplish this, just like we've accomplished all the little things we've already done. And this pulls it all together. You know, put the River Walk, put this project, do what we've done at Veterans Park, do what we've done with all of the parks, the rec center, you know, Rise Up Foundation, Splash Pad, all those little things throughout town and our town looks amazing. That's what brings business back to McHenry. That, that's why they want to come back here. It goes back to our strat planning, a great place to live, work, and play.
If I may, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. I, I understand the trepidation, I've lived it. Libertyville's a perfect example. When they started their TIP district and started doing their streetscape and everything else, made some incredible changes. The first big one that came in was Mickey Finn's Microbrewery. The guy who bought that business, moved it across the street, he invested four and a half million bucks into an existing building to create the biggest business that's in downtown Libertyville. So it's not necessarily a big business that comes in, but some of these smaller guys that are coming in that have some really interesting ideas for unique downtowns, that are unique spaces and everything else. El Gaugwin you mentioned, I want to say we spent almost twelve million dollars on just that section of, of Main Street and the two, two and a half blocks or so that were there. Now that included ripping out all the underground infrastructure and taking all the overhead and putting it underground. However, they're looking at doing RFPs for all the land that's on El Gaugwin Road between Harrison and Main Street and an RFP where the bank property is on the other end, Hook and Dab. And that's going to go out for development proposals and, you know, that brings in the excitement. If they hadn't done that work down there, and, and how robust it is, is up to you to decide. It's dynamic. And what you want to do and where you want to do it is there. But there are all kinds of examples of, of this happening and creating the energy, synergy, and the excitement that you're discussing that, that can make it happen. It's not going to happen with a snap of fingers, it's an evolution. But I've, I've been part of it and watched it happen and seen it happen, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alvin?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement to the fact that, number one, we're not El Gaugwin, we're not Huntley. And that's typically because of the fact of locations of major transportation. We don't have expressways. You know, if, if FAP four-twenty had existed and was coming through, all of this probably wouldn't even be enough. But we're not that type of community. You can't compare us to El Gaugwin, you can't compare us to Huntley. We're McHenry, we're not anywhere near the same demographics. The income levels are lower here, we're more of a white, or blue collar community than, than a white collar community. And like I said, build it and they will come? Yeah, you could say that, but to me, it's build it and we're, we're going to wind up paying. And by doing all this, the taxpayers in this community are going to be paying a lot more money because, thank you.
Any other questions?
Ross, go ahead. I just wanted to, I just want to say, remember this is a plan, and without a plan, we're going nowhere, right? So this is step one. We, we know we don't have the funding, the fifteen million dollars to do this, but this plan is going to be, I don't want to use the word shell, but this plan is going to be in our planning documents now. If we identify grants, you know, we have windfall donations, whatever it is, this is always something for us to look at and see where we can spend some dollars. And it doesn't have to be done all at once. So that's just what we're asking tonight, is to adopt that plan. So it's just, it's that planning document, right? So we can refer to it, we can identify funding sources, we can source it. Thanks.
Thank you. Alvin, is that it?
No, no, yeah, yeah, he did, yeah.
We're not, we're not asking for any money?
No, no, you're reading my mind.
Anything moving forward is going to come back to the council.
In regards to, it's planned, it's, 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 yeah, it's, it's a process, it's, you know, we're going to work with this thing. It's going to, we're going to work with this thing. And, uh, I'm going to go through this and, and I, I can say today that it will never be what we're looking at tonight, right here on paper. But I, I think there's definitely some avenues to, to, to start, you know, you know, moving forward with a plan. And, you know, who, who knows if we'll ever get to the point of, of potentially doing the, the, the two streets like this, Riverside and, and Main. But I do like that, you know, and it's what the groups were talking about, having more open spaces, having places to sit down, uh, being able to pedestrian traffic. And how do we work with that pedestrian traffic? And how do we deal with, you know, the ADA concerns and, and those sort of? So, yeah, yeah, because it's, what we're looking at tonight is something that could, we could develop into this probably in the next 20 years. But I just don't see it happening like what we're looking, you know, exactly what we're, what we're doing tonight. But it's a plan and, you know, it's something to work with. It's a tool. Thank you.
Alderman Strachan? Is there a motion on the floor there?
No.
Would you like to make a motion? Seven half has presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Miller.
Second.
Uh, no other comment, Clark, can you please?
Alderman Strachan?
Yes.
Alderman Miller, yes. Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding? Oh, sorry, Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glass?
Yeah.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work and we look forward to working with you in the future. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I got to give this back.
Oh, yeah.
Don't walk off.
All right, next item on the agenda, discussion item, AKA is the annual MS4 update in green infrastructure recommendations. Director Strange?
Thank you, Jared. And the, the summary is written a little bit incorrectly, but the recommendation at the end is correct. Uh, we're looking for directions from city council to give us the go ahead draft, a, a rain barrel ordinance. Uh, so what this is, is the MS4 update overall, what it is, is we have a permit with the state environmental protection agency to basically operate a municipal storm sewer system called our MS4 permit. We have an obligation on an annual basis to report back to the IPA and also to update council, our elected body officials as to our efforts to maintain compliance with that permit. We do, these are the, uh, city, at the public works committee, uh, from the council now. And, uh, treatment operations manager, Russ Zick, has been in charge of, uh, managing our MS4 permit activities, compliance for probably about the last five, six years at least, about long, 10? That's why we're going to have fun. Um, and he is here to present the update.
Thank you, Troy, mayor, council members and staff. Um, as Troy mentioned, uh, there's kind of a two-part thing tonight. We're going to give an update on our MS4 permit and then discuss, uh, green infrastructure. Um, due to COVID-19 restrictions, uh, this past year, the environmental group cleanup efforts have kind of been paused. We worked with the environmental defenders of McHenry County and they, uh, took a break this past year. Uh, we fully expect to resume, uh, cleanup this spring and summer and system them. In 2021, a total of 156 man-hours were spent, uh, cleaning and maintaining and repairing storm sewers. We had a total of two illicit discharges. The illicit discharges are when, um, someone reports either an employee or a resident reports something being discharged into a storm sewer. We have to go out and check those out. We have to analyze what's being discharged into the storm sewer, make sure that it is appropriate. Um, if not, we have to tell the resident to stop that, correct the measures, and then they can resume it. It turns out that both of these incidents were, um, residents draining their pools. I sampled the water, there was no chlorine in it, everything was fine, they were able to continue. Uh, as Troy mentioned, uh, our MS4 permit has requirements every year. One of those was to give an update, another one is to have training for our employees. That training will be happening in March of this year. They have training on best management practices for spotting illicit discharges and also good housekeeping practices. Uh, a new MS4, the permit cycle for an MS4 permit is five years. Every five years, they reissue the permit and at that time they make changes to the permit. The new permit will be issued in March of 2022. Uh, we will be reformatting our annual report to reflect these changes, um, streamline the report, make it more in line with permit. Uh, we do know that there is, they, they have redo, they have set out a draft permit, there were comments, and then the IPA, uh, responded to that. So we do know there is going to be increased sampling of storm water. And we're, we're starting to do that more and more. We have to identify the pollutants of concern in the city in our storm water. And moving forward, at some point in the future, we may be asked to do some things to treat our storm water or to mitigate some of the contaminants, uh, in the storm water that we're putting into the river. All right. Now, a little bit of background on the green infrastructure. Uh, in June of 2020, we were, our, our MS4 permit was audited by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. They looked at our website, they looked at all the reports, the paperwork that we turn in. Um, they found the city of McHenry was generally in compliance with the permit. We had no delinquencies or deficiencies. But they did, um, recommend that we work to improve our green infrastructure. Uh, green infrastructure is a way of handling or managing storm water runoff that is more beneficial to the environment than just letting it go out onto the streets and down the drains. Uh, examples of green infrastructure, uh, would be rain barrels that residents can attach to the downspouts of their house, capture the rainwater, reuse that rainwater then to water their gardens, wash their cars, or, um, other activities around the house. Several communities, um, in the surrounding areas have an act, an active rain barrel ordinances. Um, Elgin, Woodstock, Algonquin, and Crystal Lake are examples of communities that have rain barrel programs and rain barrel ordinances. I have included, um, the Crystal Lake rain barrel ordinance as an example. Uh, although these communities, they're, they're different and their programs are administered different, the one common denominator is that they all offer residents, um, a one-time reimbursement on their water bill if they purchase a rain barrel. Um, a couple of ways to do this, you can work with local retailers. They can set up, they, Ace, for instance, I spoke to Gary, the manager of Ace. They stock rain barrels, they would be more than willing to work with us. Uh, residents could then, uh, we'd have to create a form, a reimbursement form that the resident could submit their paid receipt with the form to receive that credit on their water bill. Um, another way to kind of run the program is to have, um, uh, there's a company called Upcycle Products. Uh, there's been a couple of examples of their rain barrels included in this, uh, attachment. They could set up an online store on our webpage. So residents could just click on that, it would take them right to the store. They would have, um, probably a little bit better, um, selection of barrels to choose from. They would pay online, barrels would be shipped directly to the residents, we wouldn't have to touch anything. And once a month, Upcycle Products would send us a report with all the residents that purchased barrels. And that way we could, um, credit their accounts. So there's a couple of different ways we could actually run, uh, both of those, um, simultaneously. Another example of green infrastructure are rain gardens, which are small bio-retention areas that capture the rainwater and then use that to grow a garden. Um, again, these are, these are, these are green infrastructures. The, the, the bio-retention and the rain gardens work very well with street skates. Um, the gentleman that were just here, some of, some of the highlights that, uh, that they designed, I saw really nice places to stick a rain guard. So small things like that, moving forward, if, uh, council and the people, um, designing these could keep that in mind, it would be really beneficial for us to show the environmental protection agency that we are taking steps forward, um, with green initiatives. Uh, so if council can, uh, council concurs, we would like to, um, it's recommended that we create an ordinance outlining the, uh, specific size, use and space for the rain barrels, um, similar to Crystal Lakes. And, um, that's it. With that, um, any questions?
So just, um, go ahead. Yeah, so just for council's clarification, we're, we're not anticipating this being any sort of a, a really burdensome expense at this time. Uh, one of the things that, I, I think you'll see for those of you who sat on the MS4 updates is that right now, compliance is not particularly burdensome, but, uh, it kind of hints at where things are going. And if we ever get to a point, as Ross mentioned, uh, where we're looking at trying to meet certain data unmeasurables regarding our storm water runoff, compliance, uh, is, is going to get to a point where it's going to have to be accounted for financially at some point. I think we're a little ways away from that because there's not really, I don't even think the state has a really practical way to really compel.
No, they have not, yeah.
Uh, but if they ever get to, to that point, it will become more of a financial burden for us.
As Director Strange mentioned, it is, uh, it is a relatively small program. We don't anticipate, uh, large volumes of people taking advantage of this. But the fact that we have a program and we offer it to the people, um, it's good for them and it's good for us.
Alderman Santi?
$30? If you're paying for a price for rain barrels, how many, how many a household will use normally? To at least have like two, three or four on each corner of the house? I mean, with all due respect, I'd love to do something like this. I don't know how many people are going to use it, but I, I would think that maybe we should bump up that number a little bit in regards to the credit.
Rain barrels do average $50 to $65.
Okay, yeah.
Per barrel.
And my neighbor's got two, so he's a hundred bucks out right now. I mean, I, I'm just saying, I like the concept, but I, I think we could move a little bit higher on this number. Maybe, maybe I'm going down the wrong path there, but if you're going to do something like this, and how many citizens are actually going to use it? Maybe 5%? Uh, you know, so I, I don't think this is going to really hinder our budget and, you know, our, our general fund here. I, that's my thoughts.
And, and I, I, I put the $30 in there basically as a starting point, then for some of the other, some of the other municipalities.
Thank you, Ross.
Started with that.
Alderman Strachan? I'm looking at Alderman Miller because I think I would buy a rain barrel and not be looking for a credit. I, I just think that it's a, environmentally for myself, I would be happy to do it because I would want to do that as a whole. But I just don't know that, that, I don't know that the credit drives the program. Anybody who's probably going to do it is likely going to do it just because that's what they choose to do. So for me, I, I think it's a great program. I think we should implement it, but I don't know that the credit for me is, it has to be higher than it is or there at all in my perspective. Alderman Miller?
I, I have two comments. Um, one, I've been actually reading our rain gardens and it's probably no surprise to you, Director Strange. Um, do we require a permit for a rain garden? Um, do we know?
I mean, it would really be a matter of what sort of disturbance it creates in terms of crossing some sort of a threshold.
It's a raised, it's basically a raised garden that you're taking the end of your downspout to and putting a trough in. So it's a, it's a raised bed garden.
We would definitely have to take a look at that if you're diverting water or.
I'm diverting my downspout.
Of course, yeah. I mean, there's the potential to have an adverse effect on your neighboring property.
Right, the, I'm sorry, the rain garden component that I was speaking of, um, was more for a street skate or, or a municipal project.
I know.
Um, we would have to tailor things.
I know.
Any, I mean, anything of private citizen would be capable of constructing or paying for constructing, for the most part, would probably fall under the threshold areas where, you know, with more in storm water permits would be my, my best approximation. Uh, just one more clarification, when I talk about the transition from these modest costs, which are really just kind of about sort of kind of perception-based programs. One of the things that has come up in our permits the last few years is the state has hinted at, when I, they, they basically politely asked us, but not compelled us, to build a new stall storage, storage facility for our stall. So if they ever went from politely asking to mandating, that's, that's what I'm talking about in terms of the transition from these very modest costs to something really being forced upon us and a real cost that has to be come to us.
So that was my first comment, is does there a permit required? So start thinking about that because I'm going to come ask you. Um, my second comment was instead of a credit, I, I think it would be a great reinforcement if we have a local vendor like Ace Hardware that sells them, that maybe we work with an incentive program to motivate our residents to incorporate rain barrels, that we can work with an incentive at a local vendor to maybe get a discount or a, a, a better price on a rain barrel. You know, if you're a city resident, go to Ace Hardware and you can get their $50 rain barrel for $30. Um, instead of a credit from us, maybe just working on an incentive package through a local vendor. So we can promote it, market it, and incentivize it in a different manner to get more publicity for the program. Because the whole point is to get more people to do it than it is just to say, oh, if you do it, we'll give you a credit. I think we could do a different marketing approach if you spun it a different way. But that's just me at the end of the table. That's one of my comments.
Alderman Miller?
Yeah, you know, they were talking $30 credit. And somebody made the comment, uh, well, you know, $50 for the thing or whatever. You know, somebody's using a rain barrel, in most cases, it's because of the fact that they use outside water. And if they're using a rain barrel, they're saving on their water bills. So what are we going to pay them completely to save on their water bills? Because the more money that they save on their water bills, the more it costs everybody else to pay for the main, maintain, uh, maintenance of the, uh, the system. So again, it's one of those, for a reaction, there's a reaction and, uh, we need to look at what we do and how it's going to affect everybody else.
All right. Well, who's going to come back to council on a later date? Do we, if, why don't we, do you have any questions, comments, what you, uh, have done to? Oh, go ahead.
I think it's a great idea. I don't think we need to, uh, give it a rebate on.
I agree.
We see, um, it's a word.
I agree with that. All right. So, but do we, are we giving Director Strange enough information? Are, are we a yes on getting to the draft?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm fine with it, whatever you think about that, I'm fine.
All right, we're looking at incentive packages opposed to, uh.
Thanks, Ross, appreciate it. Thank you, Ross. All right, uh, seven parts?
Is there any other seven parts?
No.
We might have something going on this weekend, a little, little bit, a little bit. If anybody has a war dance to do, it would be great. Um, but yeah, the Shamrock Stuff Box, so Saturday again will be, um, 8:00 AM will be the five, the Kwanzaa Club does the Shamrock Shuffle, uh, based out of East Campus. Um, so the 5K, River Dying starts at 10:00 AM. Um, the festival grounds, Allen and North Point will open up at 11:00. Um, there will be the, the kids' bounce houses and face painting and, um, we'll have, uh, four, four different food trucks or food options. Uh, you know, Metalwood Grill, the country club, decided to participate, so it's always great to have a local food option involved there. Um, and then we'll have live entertainment, all kinds of things going on all, all around town. Uh, and then Sunday, the same, 12 o'clock to 7:00. And 7:00 o'clock, we have fireworks. So it won't be a, it won't be a big show, it'll probably be, you know, a 10, 12 minute show, uh, right downtown. Um, it's always a nice, a nice touch. So, um, the Gary Lane took on the grand festival spot there and then Gary Lane of us four split the fireworks this year. So it was nice to have, have enough stuff up for that as well.
Great, thanks, though. All right, um, I have nothing, city council comments? Other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, from McHenry, Illinois, shout out to the people of Ukraine. Um, the whole, the whole world's watching you and, um, got you.
Any other city council comments?
I have to adjourn.
Alderman Strachan? Motion. Second. Alderman Santi? Second. Greg Plcumber?
Alderman Strachan?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glass?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Have a great evening.